Oh, you're too kind.
Has anybody happened to see the the new croquet mallet that we have in the city manager's office? It's it's a perpetual gavel. So it's going to be handed off from mayor to mayor. Can also be used to defend against a coup. Grab some water, I'll be right back.
Okay, I have exactly 90 seconds.
All right. We'll wait for the countdown.
60 seconds.
I thought you said six for a minute there, I was about to panic. Ready, go!
No. No, no, yeah, don't, sorry.
It's all good.
We're just horsing around here. Okay. 30 seconds. And here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, and we're locked.
Good evening, and welcome to this, the October 12th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
Here. All right, well, due to feedback and delay with the meeting platforms, I will be reciting tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Please mute your microphones and follow along at home if you would please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, participating in tonight's meeting. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements, and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few minutes to explain the process we'll be using at this meeting. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. Members of the public can participate by submitting public comment through the YouTube or the Zoom Q and A feature. The Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the City of Livermore website and on the agenda. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person, per item. Comments should be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record, and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. The public comment period closes at the end of the comments being read into the record. Also, please note that a supplemental packet with correspondence previously delivered to the council was delivered this afternoon to all the council members. We have not, we have had an opportunity to review those comments, and they are also part of the public record. As I said, items received prior to the meeting using email or the Google Form link on the city agenda were provided to the council, and the public also received those as available as a supplemental packet prior to the meeting and will not be read into the record. So with that, we have, under Proclamations and Presentations, we have a presentation by Karen Cowan, Assistant Executive Director of the California Stormwater Quality Association, awarding the Outstanding Sustainable Stormwater Project or Program Award to the City of Livermore, Zone 7 Water Agency, the City of Pleasanton, and the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District for the Living Arroyos and Adopt a Creek programs. So with that, Ms. Cowan.
Good evening, and it is my extreme pleasure and privilege to be here this evening with you all, and to do probably one of the most fun parts of my job, and that is to give someone an award. It's the best kind of public testimony I get to make. So I'm going to start my presentation here. As the mayor noted, I am here today to present to you all the Outstanding Sustainable Stormwater Project or Program Award. So before I do that, I think it's probably helpful so you know who's actually giving you this award and give you a little context. So with that, I want to tell you a little bit about the California Stormwater Quality Association, CASCA for short, as we're known. We are a member organization, a nonprofit, that works on behalf of stormwater permittees throughout California to advance sustainable stormwater management that's protective of California water resources. So a very simple, simple way of saying that is basically cities and counties are regulated for stormwater throughout California, and we work on behalf of them to help them implement their program goals. What's key for what we do is we believe that we are all stronger together and putting our voices together. So you can see here that we represent at least 26 million people throughout California. And we say at least because we're very conservative on that number. We don't want to double count folks because, as you know, municipal jurisdictions are one thing, and then you have some educational facilities and wastewater agencies that overlap. So we do it on a very conservative level, and that's just our municipal population that we work on behalf of. I'm just going to touch on our vision statement only because it's very relevant to presenting this award this evening. So what we strive to do as an organization is these five principles that you can see here before you. The first is lead, that we're a leader in our field, and always working on behalf of everyone on stormwater policies, regulations, and programs. We collaborate, we're a forum where people come together, we learn from each other and share information to make each other better. We educate ourselves, the public, the regulators, to helping advance sustainable stormwater management. We support the programs, so developing tools and guidance that can help everyone achieve their goals in their actual stormwater programs, and develop, one of my favorite parts, and that's helping to develop our future leaders within the industry for tomorrow.
Erin, your screen is not shared. We're still getting a video of you live.
Oh, you are? Well, let's fix that. Hold on one second. And thank you for that. It'd be awful to get to the end and realize that you've just gotten to see my face the whole time here. All right, how about now?
Oh, there we go.
All right. Well, just take a second so you can see that screen. What's really, actually, we'll go back. So it's important to note is the City of Livermore is one of our members through the Alameda County Clean Water Program. So we are very thankful to have the City of Livermore as one of our members. So just really briefly, so you know what we do specifically on behalf of you. This is some, some work that we just did in 2019. We're constantly working on behalf of our municipal folks, writing comment letters, providing testimony to state water board, developing work products that folks can use within their individual programs. There's times we do legal opinions, we have a podcast, and that's just the tip of the iceberg of things that we do that we actually produce in any given year. So one of the things we also do is our awards program, and the mission of our awards program is to advance sustainable stormwater management by highlighting the folks who are doing the really important things that we need to do in the field of stormwater. And I've highlighted here our award category that we're going to be talking about tonight, and that is the Outstanding Sustainable Stormwater Project or Program. So it is my very, very distinct pleasure to present the award to the City of Livermore, Zone 7 Water Agency, the City of Pleasanton, and Livermore Area Recreation and Park District for the Living Arroyos Program. So I'm not going to tell you too much about the project because I don't want to speak on behalf of city staff, but they are on the line if you would like to know more. But the reason I went through all of our core parts of our vision statement is, one of the things that we like about this program is it feels like a local effort to basically do what we try to do at the statewide level. It's a leading program, being very innovative and creative. It's based in collaboration between not only just other municipal organizations who are working to implement their program, but also within the community itself. Obviously, there's a lot of education that's occurring within the community. It supports the implementation of your actual stormwater program, and again, building, developing future leaders for tomorrow. And these are pictures that are all from the submittal from the City of Livermore, and I pulled these out because, again, I think it speaks very clearly to the amazing work, not that's just happening in the field of water quality, but within your community. So improving water quality, building community together, and creating your watershed ambassadors. There are three key parts of the program to create these watershed ambassadors. There's an internship program, volunteer workdays, and the Adopt a Creek Spot Program. So normally, this would be the part where there'd be 1,000 people behind me, truly at our conference, and we would all clap, and there'd be lots of energy, and we'd hand over the big award. Unfortunately, this year, we just mailed it directly to city staff, but I can tell you with the great energy and enthusiasm that would come with 1,000 people behind me, hopefully through me, you can feel that support and appreciation and our significant congratulations on your work with Living Arroyos. That's all I have.
All right, well, thank you very much. These really are remarkable programs. I've participated in them, been out on the creek planting oak trees and cleaning up litter. And what's, what's a lot of fun about this is it gets people involved. You've got students, you've got young children, you've got seniors. So it really gives an opportunity for people to get out into nature and really make a difference. And I think that's, that's one of the reasons it is such a great program, is because it gets people involved. And thank you so much for your support and for recognizing the City of Livermore, Zone 7, LARPD, and the City of Pleasanton for all of our combined efforts to really continue to make this community and our environment a great place to be. So Ms. Cowan, thank you ever so much. I certainly appreciate the recognition.
Why, thank you very much, and we appreciate your support in CASCA as well. Thank you.
Okay, now moving on, we've got a proclamation. This is recognizing October 2020 as Bullying Prevention Month. And this is, October 21st is going to be Unity Day, and of course, a nod to Councilmembers Monroe and Vice Mayor Warner for the unity, equity, and inclusion efforts that they have been making over the last few months. So whereas, October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and one out of every five students ages 12 to 18 report being bullied at school during the school year, according to the National Center for Educational Statistics. And whereas, the City of Livermore will join the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District and Livermore Area Recreation and Park District in celebrating Unity Day, an annual event with participants joining together nationwide to unite in the commitment to stop bullying and to promote healthier communities through kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And whereas, as civic leaders of Livermore, we can and must use our resources to effect positive changes in our community. And whereas, the City of Livermore is committed to engaging the community in creating welcoming and inclusive environments for all through its work with the Equity and Inclusion Working Group. Now, therefore, the City of Livermore proclaims October 2020 as National Bullying Prevention Month, and October 21st as Unity Day in the City of Livermore to bring awareness to the issue of bully prevention and to work to create safe and supportive environments for all students and community members. So this will be presented, and also recognizing the efforts that our Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission has undertaken, both through the mayor's office and with their own initiative on the anti-bullying programs that we've undertaken both through the city, with our community partners, and also the United States Conference of Mayors. So, thank you very much, and we have, I'll present this proclamation. We did receive public comment, and that is, it has been included in the public record. And moving on to Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda. They're typically well, I'm sorry, sorry, I got it in myself. So these are not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to 500 words or less, and that the city council, because the Brown Act can neither deliberate nor take action on these items. So with that, I'm going to open the Citizens Forum. So the city clerk had any public comments at this point?
Good evening, Mayor. We have received a couple of different comments, as is our policy. We will not be reading the comments that we received earlier today that were published and provided to the public and the council. City Clerk's office, please read the comments that we have received as new comments.
This comment is from Jim Mechanic. Dear Councilmember, City Councilmembers, my name is Jim Mechanic, and I sent to the council an email on September 12th and submitted a public comment on September 26th concerning the complete restoration of the bike path on the levee behind Forest Glade Estates that was severely damaged by the high flow in the Arroyo in 2017. A letter of the same subject was also sent from the Homeowners Association to the mayor on July 7th. I'm interested to know when a response would be available to the request that the city council review and take action on the subject. And that concludes the comments that weren't previously received. On Zoom.
Question to the city manager, do we have an update on the progress that's being made out there?
I do not have an update. We can certainly supply that to the council before next meeting.
Okay, very good. And I think this is very important. We also received notice of the Los Pacitas College Veterans First Program. They're going to be having their third annual challenge for veterans. So it's going to be October 21st through November 11th. It's 2.2 for 22 to raise awareness about the critical issue affecting veterans. We hope that participating together, we're able to help advocate for the cause. So registration is now open, and it includes a shirt, a commemorative medal, and excellent time for a, for a great cause. It's 2.2 kilometers, a 2.2 challenge. You can get to run sign up dot com slash race slash California slash Livermore slash 2.2 for 22 Walk for Vets. So that's from Los Pacitas College. You can go to the college and get more information on that. We also did receive comments from Jackie Cota. Those are all in the public record. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. The consent calendar, these are items that are routine in nature. They're typically passed in one motion, unless anybody wishes to have anything pulled for comment.
Did we check YouTube? Is that empty as well?
Oh. Oh, on the Citizens Forum?
Right.
City Clerk, anything?
There are no new comments received over YouTube.
Okay, going to close the public, the Citizens Forum. Coming back to the consent calendar, is there any item that anyone wishes to have pulled, or is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I'll move.
And I will second.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe makes the motion. Councilmember Coomer seconds that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshon.
Aye. Okay, very good. And by the way, I was quite struck by the, the switch for the generator, the wastewater treatment plant. A 350-page staff report, that was very comprehensive, and I think that cost almost as much as the switch. But great effort, great information, and something that ensures that our vital infrastructure continues to operate during times of crisis. So I think it's great planning ahead of time, and let's hope we never have to use it, but if we do, we'll have it. It's great, thank you. We have no public hearings, and now matters of, for consideration, 6.01. This is a report from our Director of Emergency Services, Mr. City Manager, regarding COVID-19.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Mark Roberts, your City Manager and your Director of Emergency Services. Give you a couple of highlights from our activities this past week, as well as a little bit of information in our update. So our total case count as of today in Livermore, according to the county site, is 957. We have a seven-day rolling average of 6.8 new cases per day, and a three-week rolling average of 4.5 new cases per day. So you can see that we've had just a slight uptick in our cases during the last 10 days or so. So we're a little above where we were. We're still significantly below where we were late summer, so that's very good news. Everybody needs to continue to remain vigilant as we head into the fall and cooler weather. At the county level, Alameda County now has 22,170 cases. And Alameda County has a 7-day rolling average of about 96 new cases, and a three-week rolling average of about 73 cases per day. So the county as well experienced a modest uptick. Again, still noticeably below their peak of the late summer. So we're doing very well in that particular area. You'll recall that last council meeting, we talked a little bit about the state's blueprint for a safer economy, noting that the ability to reopen businesses and activities is now tied to the state's overall blueprint, which includes four tiers. The most severe of those tiers or restrictive is purple, with red being the next most restrictive tier, and then orange, less restrictive than that. You recall that Alameda County moved from, sorry about that. The joy. There we go. So we moved last week, excuse me, two weeks ago, from the purple tier, which is the most restrictive, to the red tier. The county, however, chose to not allow all of the red tier activities that were permitted. Permitted in red tier is the reopening of in-person classroom activities, and the county has been in discussions with all of the school districts in Alameda County under that program. The concept being that by being slightly more restrictive, that it was possible to allow some of the in-person activities to begin at the schools. Our local school district, and in fact, a number of school districts throughout Alameda County are still working through their planning processes for a widespread in-person instruction. Locally, our tri-valley mayors are working on a letter to the county noting that essentially because the schools have not chosen to open as quickly as the county would have allowed, that they're still in their planning process of how to phase that in through the grade levels, that activities in the red tier could be permitted more immediately. So that correspondence to the county is in process, and we expect to get that out this week to the county health department. If our numbers hold, we're actually doing very well, both in our main numbers and essentially on our numbers dealing with our disadvantaged populations. State of California rules require that we hit both on overall numbers, and that our most disadvantaged communities also make forward progress in order to move into the next tier. Alameda County currently meets the initial criteria to move into the orange tier as early as later this week. That's if the numbers hold through essentially the end of last week. So they'll be totaling those numbers up essentially and seeing where we are. Orange tier would allow additional opening. It would be possible to include activities, if the county so chose, to have indoor restaurant seating to be up to 50% capacity, and well as a number of other indoor activities, such as places of worship at indoor, at 50% capacity or a maximum 200 folks, movie theaters, gyms at 25% capacity, and office buildings. All of those are permitted activities within the orange tier. So we'll certainly be looking out, the traditional pattern is the county makes a press release a little later in the week, and then issues a new order. So we are anticipating at least some activity as early as this week, or perhaps next week, to at least have the option. And then we are looking for the county to give guidance on essentially whether they allow us to move fully into the red tier, and what activities out of the orange tier will be permitted. In addition to the pandemic-related information, we continue to have quite a bit of activity on the fire front. So more than 15,000 firefighters continue to work toward containment of 22 major wildfires across the state. Last week, firefighters responded to 23 additional new wildfires. However, those new wildfires were quickly brought under containment. Since the beginning of the year, there have been over 8,400 wildfires that have burned more than 4 million acres in California. And to date, the total number of statewide fatalities stands at 31, with more than 9,200 structures having been destroyed. Of course, cooler temperatures over the weekend, and for the first part of this week, it was good for firefighting. We are going to get a little more heat as the week goes on, but we do not, at this point, seem to be on a track to return to the above 100 and high-wind events that are particularly devastating to fire containment. So we'll cross our fingers. However, the month of October is one of the biggest months during firefighting season. So do not let your guard down. If you are out and about in a natural area, be particularly careful. If you see something, say something. Call 911 if you see a fire that does not appear to be already reported. So please make sure that your activities, when you're out and about, lead to us trying to continue to contain fires as we move forward. So with that, I am open and available for questions, and I and my staff are here available for you. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Honorable Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, any questions for the city manager at this point, our Director of Emergency Services? Okay, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. City Clerk's office, please read the public comments received over Zoom.
Okay, this first comment is from Jackie Cotta, and it says, "Recently, thousands of infectious disease epidemiologists and public health scientists worldwide signed a Great Barrington Declaration professing their grave concerns about the damaging health impacts of prevailing COVID-19 policies. The most compassionate approach that balances risks and benefits of reaching herd immunity. It is to allow those that are minimal risk of death to live their lives normally, to build up immunity to the virus through natural infection while protecting those who are at highest risk. The doctors call focused protection. Livermore County of Alameda have completely ignored the science and instead have opted to side with media propaganda and Democrat agenda in the destruction of our economy. The council has done zero research on their own, but rather has chosen to wait for the agenda-driven Alameda County officials. Ask no scientific questions to dictate the course of our life." Ask no scientific questions to dictate the course of our livelihood. You are complicit in moving from counting deaths to cases when a PCR case means nothing. Eighty percent are false positive. The virus has a ninety nine point seven percent recovery rate, and there is only a certain age group that is vulnerable. Your response is despicable. The information and science have been available for months, but the Liver, but the Livermore has chosen to ignore it and took it a step further by imposing draconian mask fines on the community in violation of our rights at the risk of our health capitalizing on the fear. We should be immediately allowed to resume life as normal, and you should be demanding this. Schools should be open for in, excuse me, the, schools should be open for in-person teaching. Restaurants and other businesses should all open as well as all extra, excuse me, extracurricular activities. People who are more at risk may choose to participate if they wish, but may take those decisions on their own. Isn't it interesting that today even the WHO agrees with me? Then we also have a comment from Brittany Kick. How can citizens report and request compliance for city staff members, notably police officers to wear masks? As an active community advocate, I have received complaints from multiple individuals feeling frustrated by a lack of compliance by police and fear of confrontation about it. I witnessed it myself two days ago as officers knocked on a neighbor's door unmasked. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Okay, any comments on YouTube?
No comments were received over YouTube.
Okay, a question for the City Manager. The first speaker talked about how the city of Livermore is restricting people's liberties and restaurants. This is actually the state and the county's orders, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it is my understanding that the county has made it very clear that if restaurants open in violation of their orders, since all restaurants are required to have a permit from Alameda County, that the county could actually close down those restaurants. And that the ABC has also said that they could put their liquor licenses at risk if they open in violation of the order. Is that also correct?
That is also correct. We've been informed by both the county and the state that non-compliance with lawful state orders and county orders would be grounds for potential revocation of their permits.
So if the city of Livermore said, yes, it's okay for you to open, they could be permanently put out of business by the state and the county?
Yes.
Okay, one of the things that I find very troubling in Ms. Cota's comments is she said that the recovery rate is ninety nine point seven. That means she's willing to accept one million deaths in this country from COVID. One million. And that's not taking into account the, the, the more sensitive receptors and the people that are more vulnerable. But I personally think that a million deaths is unacceptable. And anything that we can do to prevent those deaths, something as simple as wearing a mask, it's like wearing a seatbelt. There are people that could say wearing a seatbelt is adversely impacting your liberty. What if you want to have a few shots of alcohol while you're driving? There are certain things that we do that, yes, they may impact liberty, like drunk driving or you're wearing seatbelts, bicycle helmets. These are things that we do to protect people's lives. And I do not agree with the speaker that a million deaths is acceptable. So with that, the public comment period is closed. I'll bring it back to the council. Any further comments or questions? Oh, let me see, let me get to the. Vice Mayor Warner.
I have a quick question for the City Manager. What progress are we making on understanding the numbers of where the infections are occurring and giving us any insight as to any additional actions we might be needing to take?
Based on the information that is available from the county, we have taken a look at our demographic and other information. The most notable difference, of course, in Livermore is the same one that affects the entire country, county and the entire state, which is communities of color have infection rates and death rates far higher than the average. And so one of the things we're taking a look at is some further refinement of those numbers here locally. But clearly, you know, one of the items that we have already started to put more resources toward is making sure the information is available in more languages than simply English. In particular, our Latinx population is significantly hit. And so making sure that our information is both available in Spanish and as is included in information that actually does make it into the home. We have cooperated with the school district and will be working to put additional information about COVID and how to keep both infection-free, as well as how to reduce the spread of infection if you ultimately have a family member who is infected, and have that information go home with the lunch program, which the school district continues to run. So outreach to that particular population appears to be the, the single largest area, but we are also taking a look at other information to see, is there anything we can glean from activities or locations or other information? There does not appear to be enough information in the data that is collected by the county at this point when people are infected or tested. But we will continue to sort of work through those numbers as the county makes more information available.
Thank you, Councilmember Monroe.
So I wanted to follow up on Brittany Kick's comment on masks. Not only whether or not they're worn by police officers, but also I'm continuing to see not as many masks when I walk into a public space as I would like to see. So I'm wondering about that. I'm also wondering about the ability to help people get masks that fit their faces really well. Because I'm not seeing that. And then I have a comment regarding the science behind what we're doing. Not just who tells us what we're supposed to be doing, but what, who we should actually be listening to. So, but I'll, I'll hold that for the response to the masking issue.
So related to mask wearing, if there is a concern about, you know, finding any city staff out there who is not complying with the county order, the appropriate, there's a couple of appropriate places to send that. You can send that information directly to the City Manager's Office. That's right on the website. Time, location, place, who, all of that is very helpful information. We want to make sure that our staff ultimately is following all the rules, just like with any of the other rules we would expect our staff to follow. Related to additional places for people to get masks that have a more precise fit, we don't have any programs the city is running with that at the current time.
Okay, so it's, at some point, maybe that's, that's something we should consider doing. Particularly, again, this has to do not with people, you know, this is even when people wear masks, they are loose. They are, they don't fit around the ears well, they don't tie in the back well, so, so on. I would like you, if we can monitor it and see, not only if people are wearing the masks, but how, but whether they're wearing masks appropriately, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, um. So with regard to this Great Barrington Declaration, I took a moment and looked it up, and I just wanted to read this because it disturbs me when fake science is, is, is brought forward. So this is from The Guardian regarding this so-called Great Barrington Declaration. An open letter that made headlines calling for a herd immunity approach to COVID nineteen lists a number of apparently fake names among its expert signatories, including Dr. Johnny Bananas and Professor Komenek Dummies. It was said to have been signed by more than fifteen thousand scientists and medical practitioners around the world and was found to contain numerous false names, as well as those of several homeopaths. Others listed included a resident at the University of Your Momma and another supposed specialist whose name was the first version, version, excuse me, the first verse of The Macarena, if you remember that from back in the nineteen eighties. I knew it discovered eighteen self-declared homeopaths in the list of expert names and more than a hundred therapists whose expertise included massage, hypnotherapy, and Mongolian kumu singing. So I would appreciate it when we look at the science, if it actually is science, not something that is presented as such in order to get out of actually following health procedures that have been shown to work.
You're muted, Mayor.
Yes, thank you for that. I certainly appreciate the additional information. Okay, with that, any, any more questions regarding six point oh one? This is the report on COVID nineteen. Okay, and with that, we're like, move on to six point oh two. This is the update on the fiscal years two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, City Council Goals and Priorities. And I think it's pretty remarkable what we've been able to accomplish in spite of COVID nineteen wildfires, power failures. It is just remarkable what the, the staff has been able to accomplish. And I look forward to the report.
Honorable Mayor, do you actually see a presentation slide up on your screen?
I do.
All right, well, I passed the first test there. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your City Manager. As you recall, the City Council every two years begins a process after they are seated of setting goals and priorities for the coming two-year period. And you are correct, we set all of these goals and priorities back in a time before the onslaught of a worldwide pandemic and an unprecedented fire season. But with that, you are correct, although many of your key staff and staff throughout the organization have been spending at least a portion, and in some cases, a significant portion of their time on the pandemic. We have been making progress overall on your goals. Every six months, we do report back to you. And this is the third update essentially for the fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one goals. And there we go. The City Council adopted six, excuse me, five goals, including asset management, downtown, emergency management and public safety, encouraging an innovation-driven economy and homelessness and affordable housing. And it's been just a quick minute on each of these. You all received as part of your packet, and it is available publicly, a much more detailed update on dozens and dozens of individual programs and steps and activities. Under each of these general goals, gave you an update on those major items, as well as when the overall project will be completed. Starting with asset management, the goal is to establish a comprehensive asset management program, ensuring the community continues to receive its vital services through sustainable infrastructure strategy. The emphasis during this last two-year period had to do with identifying a few key pilot projects, as well as beginning our research and outreach for our public information and information sharing program. The asset identification, the phase one of Home Street Walls nearing completion. The council approved the funding to establish design guidelines for fence replacements throughout the city and funding for the tree inventory assessment is included in the twenty twenty-one budget update. A total of ten million dollars has been set aside for infrastructure renewal and replacement in your infrastructure reserve. On homelessness and affordable housing, the homeless, the goal is to establish a homelessness strategy, engaging local partners to develop a coordinated response and expand the diversity of affordable housing opportunities within the community. The homelessness strategic framework received, we received a regional allocation of funds to provide crisis intervention, intervention services. And we have updated our homelessness webpage with volunteer opportunities to reflect the ongoing efforts of your subcommittee, a made up of Councilmember Carling and Councilmember Monroe, who lead our homelessness subcommittee. Developing on affordable, multifamily, affordable projects. We completed the Chestnut Senior Project, which includes seventy-two affordable senior rental units. And the staff worked with Alameda County to secure more than four million dollars in Measure A one Affordable Housing Bond Funds. Regional opportunities, we continue to partner on the Vineyard two point O project with the Housing Consortium of East Bay. Very excited about that project as it provides a whole variety of centralized services, as well as additional housing at that location. That project did receive its entitlement approval from your Planning Commission earlier this year. Encouraging an innovation-driven economy, supporting revenue-generating businesses, high-quality jobs, entrepreneurs, and unique experiences for residents and visitors is your next goal. On the topic of entrepreneurship, the Tri Valley Connect is now live, and we completed build-out of switch labs, including incubation facilities. The laboratory is now called Daybreak Labs. We established a no-cost application for outdoor dining, fitness, and retail in response to the pandemic. And we created a citywide small business grant program. The grant program is two million dollars in size. We've already had essentially three groups of payments go out into the community. We've received almost a million dollars worth of applications. And we have sent several hundred thousand dollars out. That grant program is available to businesses who are making changes to their business to ultimately move their businesses and make them more competitive in the, in the overall pandemic world. We developed a strategy for industrial zoning and tenants in, in the S and P thirty-nine and forty area, which is south of the Oaks Business Park. And dealing with arts, culture, and tourism, the Wine Country Inn Boutique Hotel was approved for thirty rooms at Hanson and Arroyo. And we held the twenty twenty mural festival. One of the issues going back just a step here. On homelessness and affordable housing, the, the project that was noted there was related to the Chestnut Projects there. We've actually received an additional fourteen million dollars in Measure A one Affordable Housing Bonds for the project located in the downtown and a further allocation of A one funds for the project that will be on Pacific Avenue, where a portion of the units from downtown. So the four million dollars shown for this particular project was not all the money we received. We actually did very, very well in the county-wide Measure A one Affordable Bond Program. In downtown, the goal is to enhance the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. You'll see the photo is an aerial photo of Stockman's Park, where you can see the iconic horseshoe shape of the park pretty clearly from this angle here. The council approved a number of amendments, moving the overall downtown program forward. We completed our design for the I Street Parking Garage, as well as the L Street Parking Garage. We completed the Veterans Way. And on December second, twenty nineteen, the City Council approved the final design concept for Livermoreum Plaza, and the project is currently out to bid. And we will be bringing that back to you, I believe, at our next meeting. We are very close on breaking ground on the Livermoreum Plaza. In the downtown core, you have earlier this year authorized a disposition and development agreement with Quest Science Center for the lease and development of the Science and Society Cultural Facility. And of course, you can see from the photograph there is we completed construction of Stockman's Park. The last of the turf grow-in is happening right now, and the fences will be down in just a little while. Emergency management and public safety. And you'll see that the purpose of that is to establish a comprehensive emergency management program, ensuring staff and community readiness and to expand the use of technology and enhancing public safety. So you'll see a number of things that are listed on this list, completing public information, completed our public power outage plan, completed the ESF position checklist and trained over ninety-five percent of our staff on the National Emergency Management System to make sure that all of our staff are not only trained, but that our overall organization is completely compliant. So as we utilize funds from FEMA, that those funds will be, that those activities will be compliant be compliant, and that the funds that we are granted by FEMA ultimately remain with us. Of course, emergency management and your, as a council, setting that as a goal long in advance of the pandemic was prescient and allowed us to move in and address the issues that the pandemic dealt to us very effectively and efficiently. We have had the virtual emergency operations center in place, because of course, strangely, in this disaster, putting people together to work on an emergency would not be the best outcome. So we had implemented a virtual EOC that would be used in the case that we couldn't meet in a physical, single location. That processes have been used throughout the last seven months of this disaster. So we are very, I'm certainly very proud of the staff as they have responded to not only the COVID disaster, the disasters related to fire. And your, your city staff is well-prepared and has performed very well during this ongoing disaster. One slightly positive outcome of being in disaster mode for six months is that your staff now is extraordinarily well-trained on this. And so that actually will pay dividends long after this particular disaster has closed. So you can see that we have made progress across a wide variety of activities and continue to provide basic city services as well as make progress on the areas that the council set aside as its goals. And with that, I am available for questions.
Okay, very good. Again, it is just astonishing what we have been able to accomplish. I know I've said it before, but I'm always astonished when I'll email somebody 10 o'clock on a Sunday night, and I'll get a response five minutes later. Anytime of the day or night, our folks are just working 24 hours a day, and the quality of work continues to be fantastic. So thank you ever so much for that, and thanks to all of the staff that are really providing the services that everybody in this community depends upon, and we haven't missed a beat. So thank you all for that. That I see Vice Mayor Bob Warner and followed by Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I, I don't have any question. I just want to, again, second the praise. I think it's incredible what you and your staff have done, and I'm very proud of what you've been able to do. And, you know, we've been through this many years now, and it's always astounding what you, year after year, accomplish. But I think what's really amazing is that in the pandemic, that you've continued, you and your staff have continued to make incredible progress. I just want to thank you for that, and great job.
Okay, what I, what I'm going to do first is if anyone has any questions, we'll go to those. Otherwise, I'm going to open up the public comment period, and then we can come back and, and make comments. Councilmember Carling?
No question, I'll comment after the public.
Okay, very good. With that, is there any public comment on this relating to the goals and policies?
City Clerk's Office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
We have one comment from Stephen Dunbar, and it says, "Allow me to channel Mr. Wenty. Thanks for all your, thanks for all your work." And that's the comment.
Thanks for doing what we do. Great, thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thank you. I want to follow up on Vice Mayor Warner's comment and say thank you also. But I, I think one of the things that I'm particularly impressed with in this report is when I first joined council four years ago, I think we, the five of us at the council at that time noted a, a lack of what I would say is training for disaster preparedness. And I think it's Yeoman's work on the city staff to, and the city manager and, and their, and his direct reports to get people trained in the National Emergency Management System. And I, you know, I think when we, I certainly know that when I ever took this, when I were, was working, it could be boring plenty of times, but then you always wondered, well, am I ever going to need to use this? And I think we've come to realize that living where we do, yes, we will have the opportunity, if you will, I don't know whether it's an opportunity or not, but we will have the need to use it. And I think the wildfires and the dry lightning that appeared south of town here is a good example. I mean, we're all well aware of the COVID and some of the other things that have gone on, but I'm not sure that everybody understands the danger that's these dry lightning storms played on the, on the, on Livermore. And I think that our staff, because of the training that they had taken, were well-prepared to stand up for that potential emergency. Fortunately, the dry lightning and that second phase of dry lightning stayed out in the Pacific Ocean, but nonetheless, I think the city is well-prepared. So again, congratulations on all the work. And I just want to point out, I mean, I mean, everybody can see what's being done downtown and some of the other things that take physical appearance, but I don't know that everybody realizes the time and energy that the staff have put in to take the appropriate training to prepare us for, for disasters. So thanks again.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Carling. And you may recall that when we were, when, when we made emergency response a priority back there in, in February of 2019, we understood that, I'm sorry, February of 2017, that we heard from people, well, why do we need to develop an emergency operations center? We've gone 150 years without needing an emergency operations center. And my response was always, well, there's a lot more to fall down and burn up than there was 150 years ago. And this year, more than any other, highlights the importance of the pre-planning that goes into this, because the thing about an emergency is you may be dealing with the unexpected, the, the unimaginable, or the unthinkable, and you absolutely need to be prepared for that. So right back to staff, what an amazing job that you've done, and what a tremendous test has been made on this city during 2020. So congratulations again, all, all the great efforts and making all that happen. Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah, so I, I would echo that as well. I wanted to call out a couple of areas in particular, and I do this with great hesitation, simply because like all of you, I went down the list, and particularly in this year was just blown away. But I wanted to call out the work in infrastructure in particular, and the camp committee and the work that they, that they've done under Public Works in gathering survey information and, and, and working to really involve the community in how we're going to deal with our, our ongoing infrastructure issues. I thought, you know, having the, these are small things, but, but important. I know that on social media, trees are a big deal, and having an inventory of what trees the city owns is, it's pretty cool. I looked at the, what innovation, the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, the work that has gone on there, from arts to business to Daybreak. The biggest thing there was, I'm kidding, totally kidding, but the switch from, moving from the switch to, to Daybreak Labs was, you know, that was, that was a good move there. And the, just the range and the breadth that's been done in that area. You know, homelessness and, and housing, affordable housing is stuff that Councilmember Carling and I live very often, and, you know. We'll, we'll be having, we'll be continuing with workshops this coming week, so I'm not going to really delve into that. But again, it's an area where some, a lot of heavy lifting has been done. I actually do want to mention one thing, which is I've seen a few people say that we really want to make sure that the city is giving the county what for. And I will point out that part of the reason that we are able to do what we can with homelessness and with affordable housing is because we advocate for and get money from the county. And that's a really, so that relationship is really important. I'm going to stop there, but thank you, thank you all. You are so deeply appreciated.
Well, and to give credit where credit is due, we have gotten tremendous support from Scott Haggerty on the supervisors, on the board supervisors, so.
Absolutely. Yay, Scott.
Having that strong voice from the Tri Valley is very important, and I'd like to recognize Vice Mayor Bob Warner for his push and drive to, to focus on asset management. That was one of his initiatives. So I want to recognize the Vice Mayor's efforts on asset management. So thank you for that. Councilmember Coomer, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. I, I, here I sit on the way out, only a couple more meetings left, and it is so, it's gratifying to see the work that we've been able to do over the last few years, and that it's all coming together now and showing up in, in, in such a, it puts us more in a positive light that we've been able to work, the, the five of us and the previous council I was involved with and hash out these ideas, hash out these things. And I think at the, the crux of that hashing out calls out for a real big clap of the hands for our city manager, because his leadership has been just incredible while I've been on council, always been there for me when I've had a question about something or, you know, dove into something we're not quite sure we should have. So I just love to, love to see how we've come along here, and I feel good going out. Thank you.
Do you want a literal clap of the hands? Because we can, I can oblige.
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah. I'll clap in my sleep.
And those folks that said, oh yeah, you can just take a victory lap this year, didn't happen. So, okay, any further comments? I see none. Let's move on to. Yeah, okay, move on to 6.03. This is discussion and direction regarding the 2020 National Citizen Survey. And I just to highlight that the last citizen survey that we had that was released in 2019 identified that 93% of the citizens in Livermore that were polled agreed that Livermore is a great place to live and raise a family, and recognized that all of us on the council agree that that doesn't happen by accident. So with that, let me hand this off.
Honorable Mayor, it's your City Manager, Mark Robertson. I want to introduce your Deputy City Manager, Christine Martin, who will be giving you the overview of this item, including the, the overall contract as well as the request for any open-ended questions. With that, Christine?
Thank you, Mark. This, this is a good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I am Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager. As you may recall, every two years since 2004, the city has partnered with the National Citizen Survey, which recently merged with Pollco, a public input technology company, to identify our residents' values and perceptions of city services and quality of life. The survey is an important benchmarking tool, and the results aid in council decision-making, opens dialogue, and increases community participation. The results are shared with the public via city council meeting presentations, report postings on the city's website, and on social media. This year, the statistically valid survey will sample 6,000 Livermore households with both English and Spanish language options available. In 2018, just to refresh your memory, the sample size for Livermore was 3,200 households, and we had a response rate of 23%, which is a slightly higher than the average response rate for the National Citizen Survey across the nation. The increased sample size this year represents a new hybrid approach in which 2,400 households will receive survey packets in the mail and be invited to complete them in the paper format or online if they choose. And an additional 3,600 households will receive a postcard invitation to complete the survey online. This hybrid methodology offers the opportunity to reach more households at a lower cost. Additionally, for the third time, this survey will also be available to all interested residents for two weeks in mid-December via a unique web link. Tallys from this non-scientific opt-in effort will also be reported to the city, although in a separate document. And finally, the city may include a few local closed-ended policy questions as part of the questionnaire. Past examples that council has chosen to survey the public on include topics such as workforce housing, homelessness, and BART to Livermore. Your agenda packet included a comprehensive list of the prior Livermore survey custom questions. Staff is seeking direction from the council regarding the inclusion of policy questions for the 2020 questionnaire, and if so, those question topics. If you do identify topics, staff will work with the National Research Center on the final design of each question. And staff is available for any questions you have this evening.
Well, we certainly don't have to ask about BART to Livermore anymore. So we got that one done. But we're still working on Value Link, and that's the important thing. Well, thank you for that. Any, any questions? Then I'm going to open it up for public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council. So questions at this point? Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks, Christine. How are the 6,000 chosen? Are they just random? And are we getting them out to a good mix of diverse households?
Yes, that's a great question. The National Research, National Research Center does do a statistically valid sample across Livermore. It's random, but, but statistically valid, so they do reach a broad section of the geographic sections of our community.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Monroe?
So along those lines, given that we have some populations with fairly small numbers, is there an option for oversampling?
The sample size that, that we're doing this year is larger than in years past, and, and that has been chosen out of a few options that the survey company has. They do have a few other options that we could look into.
So I say, what, what I mean is that, so, so for example, we know that our black population is under 2%. If we wanted to sample them, we'd need to do an oversample to get anything that was valid. Is there a way to do that, or is that not possible with, with, is that not one of the options? And if it is, what would the cost be and so on?
So for our very small populations, they do actually oversample as part of that so that they can get a statistically valid, because the response, they ultimately, we're looking to get a statistically valid response for all of our sub-populations. Although the, the error band is larger, the smaller your population you go at.
Sure.
They actually, for all of our smaller populations, especially those that are in the very low single percentages, oversample those, but we'll actually inquire further as to whether further work can be done on that.
So I'm just curious, you said all of those populations. I'm, I'm wondering what would that include?
So your black population would be the, the most notable. Obviously, your Hispanic population is much larger. And so we also make sure that we're statistically valid geographically across the city, multiple areas there, and sometimes are required to go back and oversample in a particular area to make sure we have a valid statistical number of folks who have responses, because it's not only, of course, the folks we ask, it's the folks that respond.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I see no other questions. I'm going to open the public comment period. Is there any public comment?
Mayor? I'm sorry, excuse me. One public comment has been just received. City Clerk's Office, please read the comment received over Zoom.
The comment is from Mary Perner, and it says, "Are Native Americans being sampled?" And that's the comment.
Thank you. Any comments on YouTube?
None have been received.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Either Mr. Roberts or Ms. Martin, would you care to comment about the Native Americans?
I do believe that that is one of the categories. Christine, do you have any further information on that?
You know, off the top of my head, I, I'm sorry, I apologize, I do not know that one for sure. I can report back. You know, off the top of my head, I I'm sorry, I apologize. I do not know that one for sure. I can report back.
And that and that is another very small population.
Yeah, I, let's see. I I saw that somewhere, but maybe it was in a previous previous survey. So very good. All right. With that, bring it back to the council. Questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Vice Mayor Warner?
A couple of thoughts. I think this survey is very valuable, so I urge everyone who gets it to fill it out. And, you know, this informs our two-year planning process. And in the past, I think, as you noted in the package, there have been various questions that we've asked. And, you know, the one of the things we're asked to do now is comment on what other questions we might consider as those three additional ones that we get beyond the the standard set. And I I had a few thoughts on that. So I'll, if I may, I'll just start with a is this set for food for thought for the rest of the council? One of the things that may be worth asking, it depends on whether we want to burn a question on that, is to what extent has the pandemic influenced people's answers to the questions? Because I think we might see a a level shift. And so it might be helpful to have people explicitly state whether that impacted their view of things. So that's one option. The other one is, we've seen as a result of the pandemic, a shift to telecommuting. And there is some consideration of, you know, ordinance saying that maybe cities or jurisdictions should enact rules saying that X percent of the jobs offered by an employer should be through remote. But I wouldn't want to necessarily go to that point now, but maybe we ask a question of their community. To what extent should the city offer incentives to employers for allowing a certain percentage of their workforce to telecommute some fraction of the time? And I think this would have an impact on both our environmental plans as well as transportation. So that might be interesting to see what the community thinks about that. And then one that was just thinking, you know, we're not asking about BART to Livermore anymore. I'm not sure where we stand on the citizens backing a Valley Link. And so I don't know. I'm just on the fly, and so I don't know if that's an appropriate kind of question, but it again focuses on a major transportation project that we're trying to make happen. So those are the three questions that I thought might be worth discussing and would love to hear what other council members' suggestions are.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe, followed by Councilmember Carling.
So I I had been trying to figure out how to frame a question about the various interesting things that have taken place in 2020. So I very much like Vice Mayor Warner's. How's the how does the pandemic affect the way you're answering these questions? I'm wondering, so I I like that, and I'm wondering about broadening that to include some of the other issues that have taken place in this year, including fires. I mean, for for me, in addition to the staying indoors for pandemic reasons, not being able to breathe has been an interesting experience. I really appreciated the work that the city staff did in terms of getting us ready to perhaps be evacuated, but and would like, but, you know, it was not terribly comfortable. I'd be interested in knowing how people felt about that. There's a way to frame that as one question. I I think that's a good idea. I'm interested in the other issue of the year has, of course, been around equity and inclusion. And I think it would be valuable to have a question that addressed that in some way. I'm not quite sure how to frame it. Whether it be something along the lines of, you know, Valerie, have you been thinking about these issues much? Probably not. That's a little maybe a little too broad, but something that would address that. Maybe something that we want to ask, I I don't remember when these questions are due, but if we have the time, maybe we want to get the input from the Equity and Inclusion Working Group along those lines. So those were those were the two areas up. And the the third area is, I I don't know how to frame this. I looked at the previous questions around this, but thinking about housing and what the look and feel of the city is given changes in population that have taken place and are likely to take place. So I'm not, but I don't have good wording for that. I I actually think it's difficult to word. But anyway, those are the three areas anyway.
Okay, Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thanks. I also spent a little time thinking about this, and I admit that I don't have questions. These are topics that came to my mind. The first was Valley Link. I think that's already been at least mentioned. Something around COVID. I know that both Vice Mayor and Councilmember Monroe talked about the pandemic. But something about that, I'm not sure that I completely understand what you're trying to, what would be be trying to get at asking people if the pandemic influenced the answers to their questions. I I'm not sure I completely understand that. But anyway, that's something we can talk about. We are doing the Climate Action Plan, and I think there's also been a fair amount of discussion with regard to the fires and and all the other, many of the other things that we've been experiencing recently, whether or not there's something around climate that we'd like some question or question developed about. I did think about equity inclusion. I was thinking about it from the social justice point of view, but it's something around there I think would be very relevant, given the working group that is currently working. I wrote down housing. We've asked questions about housing, I think, the last two surveys. I'm not even though I think it's still important, and again, it's coming up, particularly as the development at Growth Brothers site is moving forward. Housing remains an issue, not only within Livermore, but having gone to the League of California Cities Annual Meeting last week, it continues to be a subject in California. And the last one, I admit it's not particularly, but I think it's relevant to to Livermore as a support. What do people think about the support of viticulture? And the reason I'm thinking about this is because we've, you know, we've particularly on Arroyo, you know, we've the Wine Country Inn has been proposed, but being you know, it's going to court. We also had an amendment to zoning on a piece of property across the street, which raised a lot of issues. And then I think the last meeting, we talked about asking the county for some money if they'd be willing to invest in upgrading and extending the sewer system south of town to some of the wineries who are struggling with aging septic systems. And so the thing I was thinking about are are people still supporting the viticulture economy in Livermore. So that was, those are just some ideas that I had. I know that staff goes back and works with this organization to develop the questions, but those are just some ideas that I had. Thanks.
Well, thank you. And to the the idea about the question regarding how has COVID impacted your your answers? I think that's going to be, that's an interesting question, because right now, so many people are angry, they're frustrated, and as I said at the beginning of the the staff report, ninety-three percent of people agree that Livermore is a great place to live and raise a family. We were rated as one of the top ten cities on the West Coast to live and raise a family. Well, 2020, people haven't been able to go outside because of the fires. They're angry about the the pandemic. So all of these things are hitting us right now. And is that going to impact people's response? Because they can't go out to dinner. They can't go out to the movies. They can't go to a play at the Bankhead. So this this cloud that's hanging over everybody, so it might be interesting to learn just how much that's going to affect, because if we get an answer that only sixty percent of the people think that this is a great place to live, is that what City of Livermore is doing? Or is that what all of the other things that are happening, the wildfires, power failures, the things that are truly outside of the city's control? I like the question or the idea about the the climate change, the social justice. And I think that the one on viticulture is very good, because we're putting a lot of of time and effort. Because in my perspective, viticulture and the maintenance of sustainable agriculture here is a quality of life issue, and it's a very important quality of our life, the urban growth boundary. And part of that is tied around the ongoing sustainability of agriculture. As far as Valley Link, in my mind, that's a done deal. We heard from a number of representatives at the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting. Folks representing over a quarter million people spoke in favor of Valley Link. We've got $760 million to build Valley Link. So what we're waiting for now is the ongoing commitment from the San Joaquin County. And then and then that train's gonna take off. So I think that's pretty much a foregone conclusion. It's a done deal that there's been a lot of of work behind that. So I think we're confident that's going to happen. But I think that the support for the agriculture, the attitude, social justice, and it's not, I I like those, but again, we got three and I got four. So Vice Mayor Warner?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, how many questions do we, the city manager, how many do we get?
Three.
So I was thinking about that when I put forth three. I like Councilmember Carling's suggestion of a of a list for us to consider. What about Councilmember Monroe's question? We can give you some food for thought. Possibly say more than three tonight, and you come back with questions on, say, five, and then we choose, or do we choose the three areas tonight?
Unfortunately, the timing of your survey is that we would at least need the topic areas. We we ultimately do work with the survey providers to make sure that we're asking statistically valid questions in a in a framework that'll give useful information. But we do need the the topic areas from the item this evening.
So we need to give you three and no more than three tonight, right?
That's correct, unless you want us to randomly choose by some method that staff would come up with.
That that's possible. So I I I like Councilmember Monroe's suggestion, and I think the mayor also was there to just broaden one question about how did the recent events of the pandemic and the fires, air quality, et cetera, impact your questions? And I would suggest that even asking that question lets people pause to think about, self-reflect on it. So I I think there's some value. So I I would advocate that we use one of our three questions just to understand the level setting of the answers we get, because I do believe there will be a shift because of that. And it could, depending on how you phrase the question, it might be informative. I think I would, I agree with a climate broadening, as Councilmember Carling said, and I think the mayor also said that. Some question around around us devoting effort on climate change. That hasn't really been one of our you know, actual priorities that we've done, but perhaps given the wildfires, et cetera, we should put something there. And maybe the question isn't as narrow as I focused it about telecommuting. But broaden the question about, should we focus some of our goals and priorities starting now on the longer term goal of climate change? And that's broad to include a concept of renewable energy or whatever. So maybe a broader version of that question. So that's two questions then that I would advocate for. I think what I would like to caution the other council members is that, you know, it's often been said, don't ask a question for which you don't want the answer necessarily, or you don't think about it. And what I would say is with respect to this support for the viticulture, we've already had a survey sponsored, you know, paid for by the counties, help with the city with respect to that. So we already have the answer. So I don't know that we need to ask it again. With respect to equity and inclusion, that was certainly a topic on my mind. I'm not exactly sure what that question would really be. And we're in the early stages of the Equity and Inclusion Working Group. And perhaps we should wait for that. You know, to inform us on what the what the relevant question would be. So with, let's see, looking at the other list. So those are the two that I would advocate for, something around the impact of the 2020 on your thought process. And the other one, to the extent that we devote resources for now for planning on the, you know, the broader question of climate change. So that's, those are the two that I would advocate for at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe?
Oh, I like those two. So this is a little bit tongue in cheek, but not entirely, because I I actually mean it. Is there any, how how many questions can we squeeze into a question? I mean, I, serious, it sounds funny, and I know it is, but I'm serious.
Well, the the one thing that I would make sure that the council has in mind is you have a variety of different work programs coming up, and you're going to have outreach within each of those. And it may be that getting more widespread community input happens after we've done outreach to the community on a number of items. I can think, obviously, the the Equity and Inclusion Committee, things around housing growth rates, other things which we are going to be doing a lot of work with the community as we think about updating our general plan. You know, asset management and things like that. You have an entire, you know, committee working on outreach on all of those things. All of them are super important. But it seems like we already have work programs focused in those areas that will have outreach and response back from the community, a fundamental part of those work programs. So with that, huge caveat. It it's difficult to do two different topics inside a question. Inside a question, you could sometimes get a couple of degrees on that, you know, so.
And Mark?
Yes, go ahead.
You can get a flavor of how we have to structure, how how NCS or NRC makes us structure the questions by looking at the attachment. You can see that we can ask questions that would have an answer of of indicating support or opposition in a in a continuum, or we can ask things that you can see, for example, in 2018, we asked, please indicate how important, if at all, it is for the City of Livermore to continue to provide the following for Livermore residents that experience homelessness. And there were two bullets underneath that, two things. So that was kind of, I think, how council in 2018 got to a multi-part question in one question, but but it is, you know, it's challenging. So like Mark said, you know, we have to structure the question so that we can get a statistically valid response back. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah. So can I, let me just push on that a little bit. So then on both of those those areas, so I, you know, Christine, I'm going to take your answer to be more or less that not so much with the double-barreled questions. It's maybe maybe not, particularly if they're around multiple topics. Okay, that's kind of what I expected. And I'm also going to assume, it sounds like there's, it sounds like Climate Action Committee might be dealing with public outreach. I know that they're dealing with public outreach for that, and that I also know that equity inclusion is dealing with it with it. That's one of their primary goals, so maybe we don't put that question in. That's one of their primary goals, so maybe we don't put that question in. But I'm not sure, because then the other, the next question is, is there, given that both of these are issues that are nationwide issues, is there any value to having those in to get comparison? So that's that's one one piece. The second piece is, is that the thing that's not covered anywhere else really is the various disasters of 2020. So I'm wondering about having, rather than having, if in fact, we're getting these other areas covered already, maybe what we should be thinking about is a few questions around the different disasters, which might be, how is, how is 2020 affecting your, the way you're answering these questions? But the next is something along the lines of, how are you doing? You thinking about moving out of state? How is, you know, how, what's the impact been on you? Which is a different kind of approach to this. So, you know, rather, so in other words, rather than spreading the topics around, if they're already covered, maybe sticking to one subject and spreading the focus around in there.
Well, as I recall, we actually had a question about that. It was in a survey, and I recall 95% of the people, I think it was 2014, indicated that they planned on staying in Livermore. So I think that was, it's a similar to the question that you just asked. But I think that that having some sense of just testing the the pulse of the community about how their their mindset is in the face of these truly unprecedented times between pandemic and wildfires and power failures, everything coming together at once. I think that's, it may give us a window in case some of the responses do change. Councilmember Carling, followed by Councilmember Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, so thanks. I, I see. So getting back to the climate question and look, and taking Christine's advice, I've got the third question pulled up from 2018, and it says, to what extent would you support or oppose the city providing workforce housing? So the, I guess what I was thinking about with regard to climate was, to what extent would you support or oppose the city undertaking climate initiatives? And the ones that I just quickly wrote down, suppose we went out to all electric vehicles in the in the, in the city vehicles? Or should we change building codes to only, to disallow any future homes using natural gas? For example, that's a popular one in the state. What about leaf blowers? Are these something that we want with? I mean, these are all local things that we could do that would impact climate, and we could get a sense, because I think the point is, is that some of these questions are supposed to inform us for the future. And I know we're going to get the Climate Action Report, but there's also things that we locally can do that might support, that we can take advantage of now and locally to to improve on adding to the the response to the climate. That's that's sort of what I was thinking about.
So yes, if that, if the council ultimately picks that as one, we could do either the general overall, you know, to what extent do you support the city having local policies to address climate change? Or we could be very specific, you know, and choose from a, choose from the laundry list. And you're right, we have created questions like that before to give you a little more nuanced data into particular initiatives. And we might have some of the committee work that's being done by the Climate Action Plan inform what policies they might think would be either easiest or most controversial, and with a little guidance from you guys if you wanted to get that more nuanced approach.
Right, you always do a great job in summarizing what I say. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Warner.
So just building on that, that's what I meant. You know, I gave one example of the climate change thing of the, you know, encouraging telecommuting or something like that. So from the city manager's point of view, would you want to put specific examples, or do you want to just leave the question general? Do you support local efforts to, you know, improve, you know, take climate action? I mean, would, and leave the details later to come out of the the citizens advisory group that we've got going. So I wasn't quite sure, Mark, which way you answered that question. Do you want to put specifics, or do you leave it general?
That's ultimately your policy decision there, and it has some pros and cons. It could, it could show that some policies have very strong backing and would be sort of no brainers. And it would show that others might not, and even if they're quite effective, that at least would signal to all you all that there would be further work, you know, further community discussion necessary if you were going to to adopt that, so.
So here's what I'm trying to get at. Is this a way to do what Councilmember Monroe was suggesting? Is that we have the one question, to what extent do you support the following local action items? And you have a list of a dozen, and they say yes or no on each of those? Is that one way to do this, or do you have to pick one of the dozen?
You can have a list, and Christine, if you have an example of how we've done that before. We have had a general question that's had a number of specific things. I don't think we've had a dozen, but we've certainly had a few.
We've had one in particular that I can point to that had five items underneath it. It basically was about downtown and the old Lucky site, and it was how much do you support or oppose each of the following uses for the site? And there were five uses.
2010, you had one that said, pick the top three, and there must have been at least a dozen bullets.
Oh, that's true, too. I think they've encouraged us to narrow that down a little bit more over the years. Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to build on what Councilmember Carling said and Councilmember Monroe's question of how we can get more questions for, you know, how packed, unpacked we can do things. So I would like to suggest that we do one on climate, and we list five things, if we can get away with that many, and ask them to what extent of those five initiatives they supported or not. Does Councilmember Carling, is that?
Well, frankly, I'd be happy with the way Mark approached it in terms of leaving it general with the expectation that we're going to get feedback from the Climate Action Team. And but I'd like to know whether or not the public is interested in us as a city to undertake some means to deal with climate.
Okay, that that's fine. That was the way I originally phrased it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We went off into this detailed thing about leaf blowers.
Give me an example, that's all.
Okay, so then I prefer the general question without subparts of, to what extent do you support the city taking local action to improve the climate?
Yeah, I frankly didn't think of that until Mark mentioned it, so.
I like that. I like that.
I like it, too.
Okay, and can we agree that we'll have some question about how the current 2020 has influenced people's mindset? Does that work for you?
Hey, I just don't understand how that's going to influence me moving forward.
Well, only in the sense that we have a bunch of individual questions that was pointed out about you like living here, raising a family, are you going to move or stay, et cetera? So we have detailed questions about actions that they are going to take. But I I just think, knowing whether or not 2020 has influenced people's mindset in answering these questions is valuable to me as we don't spin on trying to interpret shifts in these things. I think if all the questions are leveled set one way or the other, and I don't expect them to go up as a result of 2020, but they're going to shift down, that would be interesting to know. If we see certain questions shift down more than others, that's, that's the other thing we're going to be faced with. So I still come back with knowing something about the mindset when we do it is is good. Do we have, where did we go on the third question? And I think the way what I would expand on what the city manager said is, not only do we have these other groups that are working on, you know, like climate action or equity and inclusion, but I think the other point that I heard and what Mr. Roberts said was, do we want to ask the question now? Or, Councilmember Monroe, do we want to do it after there's been some outreach and education?
So I'll, I'll jump in. I'm not sure if you wanted Mr. Roberts or me to go first, but I'll go first. I'm wondering about doing a question that is much more general. So I think that in thinking about that, what we've heard over the last couple of weeks, we've heard people who, you know, these are the 5% that maybe have Mayor Marchand, who maybe don't feel included. And maybe it's only 5%, or maybe it's more than that who haven't been asked. But but perhaps asking that kind of a question of, how much do you feel like your voice matters? How much do you feel like you have an influence? How much do you feel like you know what's going on? Any question framed like that? So it is generally around engagement with the city and include, you know, around inclusion in the city. Welcome and inclusion.
Now, I think, if I may, I like the direction you're going there, because it's really about discrimination, et cetera. But we have heard multiple times that the city could do a better job in outreach, not on any particular topic. So I actually like the way you just phrased, to what extent do you feel heard? Independent of the topic is is another area that you, that you just suggested that I I think is interesting, because it might enable us to put more resources to our our outreach process.
So I would say not, I think that there's three pieces, heard and seen and acknowledged. So I can hear you, I can see you, and then I can dismiss you. And then, and then the other piece of that is influence. And I think all of those can be asked in one question.
Well, no, it has, it has to be, you can't ask one question with multiple parts. What it has to be is in one question of the following topics, which are you? But you can't say, you know, you can't, right? So it has to be a multi-part question. So I'm actually, I'm actually okay with that multi-part question.
Yes, yeah, and absolutely, it's, it is, all I was trying to point out is that there's, you know, there's, there's three levels of engagement, yeah.
Three is one question with three subparts, which is what you wanted to get in the first place, so.
Absolutely.
I'm good with that.
Great.
I'll be quiet at this point.
And I had, I, that was where I was going to go anyway, so I'm going to lower my hand.
Yeah, so what would that question actually be?
I'm not, so you want to phrase, phrase him, oh, okay. How do you feel, on a scale of one to 10, how do you, I'm making this up, this is terrible, but you'd ask me to do it on the fly. On a scale of one to 10, do you feel seen? Put a number, heard, put a number, engaged, put a number. Terrible wording. I understand it would have to be, be deeply reworked. But that kind of thing, where you're asking for, you know, a ranking of a feeling on one topic in three different depths. Does that make sense?
Well, okay, so I got, during the whole Measure P thing, I got, actually, a little late in that, during the pandemic, the only thing that I got more complaints that people didn't get enough information was the people were getting too much information. And it was kind of proportional to how engaged they were. And I actually heard from folks that didn't see any of the information that the city put out, because they weren't, they weren't making an effort to find it. And so it's an interesting question, because it takes a little bit of effort. And are we judging people by how much effort they're putting into this? Or, so that's my question about, my concern about how that question is going to be asked. Because depending how it's asked, we might not get a meaningful answer. Because you can have a lot of effort put out into, into messaging. And if people just don't read it, if they choose not to read it, then is it on the city that they didn't do a good job of getting the information out? Or is it the people that people didn't care?
Well, this is why I think a question like this, which again, the wording was not, needs a little work. But but I think that this is where this kind of a question does enable you to gauge. I mean, it's a little bit like the pandemic question. It's like, let's take your temperature before we determine where you, where you stand on whatever the issue is. By the way, with regard to the pandemic question, I really am wondering if there's a way to get both a, huh, how is this affecting you? But ask that in a way that also says, not only how is it affecting the way you're answering these questions, but how is it affecting, how is it affecting you? So.
Well, I think that's important, but the, if you ask someone, do you feel heard? Well, maybe they're not speaking. So that's, that's sort of the trade-off that I'm concerned about is, yeah, some people aren't heard because they aren't speaking.
I agree with the mayor. Particularly if you do it like one to 10, do you feel seen, heard, or engaged? I mean, maybe, maybe you turn the question around and ask them, what's the best way for you to be involved? Or what's the best way for you to get information about what's going on in the city? What?
I like that.
I mean, that's.
What's the best way to get information to the public?
Yeah, something like that, rather than, because I agree with John. But there's plenty of people in this community that think what's going on in the community is just fine, don't bother me.
That's a very different, no, I'm, that's not the question.
Well, that's what you.
How you get information is one question. That's a very different topic than, do you feel heard? That's two different things.
But if I never speak, of course, I'm not going to be heard. And that's John's point, and I agree with him.
Well, again, having come from however many, you know, meetings of people who are like, I haven't been listened to, that's a problem. That's not, you know, it's.
But that's a small minority of people, and you don't even know that they're going to get the questionnaire.
Well, there you get Marshall McLuhan. The medium is the message. How do we get the message to people? What is the best mechanism to get that message?
Don't get me started on Marshall McLuhan, please.
But, but, but how do you get the message to the people? And if we hear from the people that we preferred to get messaging by, I don't, I don't get anything from Facebook. I don't get anything from LinkedIn. I get a surprising amount of stuff from WeChat. But, but what is a preferred mechanism for people to get information? Some people like the mail. I mean, I know people that don't have computers. So what is the best way to get to them? Some people have said, well, have commercials on television. Well, if you only watch PBS, that's not going to help. But it may help us to frame, and this was, this was a priority that we had four years ago, was increasing public engagement. And we tried a variety of platforms. So what's the most effective way to get the message out to the people so that they can be heard? Vice Mayor Warner.
I, I kind of like how you guys, you and Councilmember Carling have evolved the question. And there were two things about it. One was, how do people want to be communicated with? But what I really resonated with was the thought, to what extent are people willing to actually make an effort? And I think that's, you know, so some question about not only which way do we, do you want to have it fed to you? But there's another question, what are you willing to do to engage? Right, what effort are you willing to make? So there, I like that thought of this, because it isn't just, you know, it's a two-way street, and it isn't that people are going to sit there and say, well, I use this art, you know, really weird social media platform, that's the only way I want my information. If you don't give it to me, you haven't made an effort. So I, I think making it clear that there's an obligation on the community members to make an effort, I like that thought.
Well, and I'm on Nextdoor a disturbing amount of time. And I see people reporting stolen bicycles. I see people reporting problems within the community. And then they complain because the city council doesn't take action. Well, somebody recently complained because I didn't answer an email. They misspelled my name, so I never got the email. So it's
Clearly your fault.
You're right, yeah. So it's, it's how did they make an effort? What's the best way to get the information to people? Because, uh, to both sides of it, it's going to take a little bit of effort. I've asked people, well, when you saw this, did you notify the police? And nobody did. They just reported it to a social media platform. And then they were done with it, and they felt that somebody else was going to pick it up and run with it.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, this fundamentally gets to, is there a obligation for the community to pull the information? Or is it simply that it has to be pushed through every channel possible?
I think it's both. I think by, by asking the question, we find out what's the best channel to push through.
Well,
I think it's both and, and, you know, so, so one of the things that we've heard on the equity and inclusion is that there are populations that we are not reaching because we are not using them. And I'm not talking Nextdoor, social media. I'm talking about communities that I don't know well enough to be able to even tell you how to reach them. We have the people who know how to reach them on the equity and inclusion. So that is something we can look at. The other thing is, is that, I mean, I just asked about, you know, our black population, it's under 2%. You can keep saying, well, it's a small minority. Yeah, you know, I mean, if you take the entire black population, that's a small minority. And I'm not trying to link everybody together, believe me. I'm just pointing out that if, that there are ways that you can make excluded groups a small minority because they're a small minority. So, so, hang on. So that's a second piece. So the other thing that we've heard is people who just haven't felt it's even worth opening their mouths because they've been not heard so long. And I think it's really important to make sure that we're framing a question in a way that is welcoming. So yes, it may be a both and, but let's make sure that we're looking at this through that equity and inclusion lens.
That's fine. We have to, want to bring it back to, we have to get to a specific topic that the city staff can actually craft a question around. And it's fundamentally, is it, when you say both and, is it push and pull? And there is a question about, that I thought that the mayor and Councilmember Carling brought up, is do people have an obligation? Or do they feel they have an obligation to actually speak? Or, I mean, right, I, I like the thought, they can't be heard if they don't speak. So to what extent do people realize that they have an obligation to make an effort here? Either to actually speak or, and/or to pull information? So they're informed when they speak? I mean, there is, I mean, it isn't just simply have, do you feel heard? I agree with the mayor and the Councilmember Carling, that asking the question that way is insufficient.
So to Vice Mayor's point, to, to Vice Mayor's point, we have great voter participation in Livermore. I think the average for Alameda County is a voter turnout of around 45%. So that means that, that you've got a large number of people, 55%. That if you ask them, are you being heard? Well, they didn't vote. We're asking people to respond. We're giving them a month to, to cast a ballot and be heard, and they don't. Now, yes, you can say, well, my vote doesn't count. Everybody's vote counts. Everybody's vote counts. But how do you get, we've asked people to vote, and 55% don't.
I, I don't understand where this, I mean, that's fine. That's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is in your community, do you feel welcome and do you feel included? Not do you vote? Yes, sure.
But no, your first question was, do you feel heard? Well, if people don't speak, they're not going to be heard.
So let me say that one of the things that was, that, that made a real impression on me as, as we went through these, these first meetings, were the number of times that people spoke about having had, had various, let's just say, non-welcoming events happen to them. And in those non-welcoming events, there were places where they were told, well, that didn't really happen in some way. So there's an obligation, you know, when you're saying you need to speak up, what happens when you speak up and you're not heard? So I, I, it's, I, I'm sorry, but, you know, that's real.
I keep speaking. And if somebody asks me to take an action, if somebody asks me to vote, I will vote and I will be heard.
Okay, John, with all due respect, look at the composition of this, of, of, of this council, and think about who we're talking about here. All of us.
Right. And if you don't speak up, you're not going to be heard. So my question is, what is the best platform so that we can be heard by the most people? That people will respond because they did hear our message? Because we did use the platform that people want to be communicated through? So, yeah, how do we, we're asking them, how is the best way to communicate with you? And if you make, if you, if you check that platform, then we will hear you. And, and we're asking that question. Councilmember Coomer, you, you came back up.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, just had to, had a coughing fit here, no worries.
Oh, okay, all right. Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, I, let's see if we can't get somewhere here. If we just simply ask, have you, do you feel heard? There's no action that can be taken from that. But if you phrase it to, how do you feel we could improve communicating with you so that you are heard? That's actionable if we then give them choices.
That's much better. That's, that's much better than, than, that's, that's phrasing that I can, I can live with that. Not only live with it, like it.
Yeah, I agree. I, that's what I was getting at, at the beginning.
We finally got there.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got that one.
So ju-just to clarify again, we had, we had several different thoughts around this. And Vice Mayor, could you repeat sort of your last version of this? Because we had essentially starting with how welcome do you feel? How heard do you feel? Do you feel encouraged to participate? And you came up with?
No, what is, what I said, if I can remember, but it's least recorded, is the way to resolve this, because I think we're, we're, we're all have committed to the same concept. The question is how to make it actionable. So the question that I, the way I phrase it is, what is the best way of, and we'll list some options that they can choose from? As to how we can best engage with them so that they feel heard? Okay, so we're asking them to tell us how we can best engage with them.
I like that.
Right?
I, I, I do too. I mean, that's really is a reach out. The only question I have is, is there a way to have an open-ended question at the end? So we, we do a list of, you know, here's 47 different ways, just making that up, that we might engage with you, but there's a 48th that you really is the one you need. Is there a way to have, to have that open-ended or not?
The list is going to be less than five.
I, yeah, yeah. But I, but in all seriousness, is there a way to have the other question asked? Or is that not a possibility?
Christine, can the question be open-ended, or does it have to be closed?
I, I am 99% sure it has to be closed.
That's my recollection as well. So we would, we would need to choose your five options there. And so they could be as broad as, you know, social media, a newsletter, things like that. It is, is that the, the type of channel that you would be expecting to get in?
Well, I, so that, you know, I wasn't going to do all the work here. The, the, the point is, we, you know, the concept, then what are the five options that would cover it? Right? That's, but, but is that enough for you to go, do we actually have to?
You do not have to craft every word, but we have the general direction.
Okay.
Is that we would then form a, a list of approximately five under what is the best way to engage with you?
Okay.
And we would submit that as well.
The other question I think we've aligned on is the general support for local efforts to take climate action.
Correct. The third one we had is, how did the disasters of 2020, including, including COVID and fires and others, impact your answers on the rest of the survey?
Right, and I, I'm still trying to be, you know, responsive to Councilmember Carling's concern. I think I heard at least the mayor and Councilmember Monroe agree that the general question of your mindset is there? Is there a way to, as you craft the question, to also, is there, you know, maybe I'll do this, is Councilmember Carling, are you okay with a mindset question?
Sure, but I, I, I guess I'm going back to the point you made earlier about the first one in regards to actions and what's actionable. And that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Well, I know, it wasn't so much actionable, direct, but is, does it inform us on interpreting the answers to the broader set of questions? From which, you know, we, we, my concern is that if we don't know how the mindset was impacted, we might misinterpret, we'll probably go misinterpret anyway. But we have less of a chance of misinterpreting the shift in the answers to the questions from two years ago to now, if we have something.
Yeah, I'm okay.
So I'd like to propose we wrap this then, is it possible?
At this point, we believe, your staff believes we have a direction on the question about how is your mindset affected by the disasters? Local policies on climate change and what is the best way to engage with you? And then we would have our staff and consultant teamwork on those to form them into questions. Is that the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, and I, I like the way Councilmember Monroe phrased it. What's the best way to engage with you so that you feel heard?
Good, yeah.
Wasn't that you who tweeted that? I thought you were the one that did that, but that's okay.
It's a group effort.
You're the one who started off with the question, do you?
Well, I, I just wanted to reflect that this has been very lively. And boy, have I enjoyed it. This has been really wonderful to get everybody's input and, and work through these questions. I, it's, I, I, I think I don't know when I've enjoyed this kind of a discussion with Councilmore.
And what I think is interesting is that even after these seven months, we've finally gotten comfortable with this format. So it's not like we're sitting next to each other and can, you know, shove each other or something, or kick us, each other under the table or something.
We can't break out the Cyber Phone bat anymore.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I agree with you. I thought it was a lively conversation. I think we got somewhere.
It was good. I think that it just shows we all come at this a little bit differently. And we've all got different experience and different experience to draw upon. And I think this is a very helpful discussion. And I think that we're going to get some really, really good information so that all of you can start working on the goals and policies in February. So I wish you all the best of luck on that. And that you continue to engage this community and, and do great things.
Well, I presume you're going to be in, in putting comments into Zoom.
Oh, absolutely. Still on Zoom and Nextdoor, so watch for me there. Okay, are we done with this?
I am.
Okay, and, and staff has sufficient direction, I believe? Terrific, thank you. I'm going to close this. And now we go to 7.0 to the report out, and matters initiated. Councilman Coomer, what do you got for us?
Well, mine is really easy because we had our Finance Administration Committee canceled. And we, I have absolutely nothing, nothing to put on the table right now.
Okay, well, very good then. Councilmember Monroe.
Well, this is, I, I missed the last council meeting. So there's a little bit that I think runs back. Well, I think I, I decided to skip that. It feels like my entire life has been around this equity and inclusion because this seems to be something that's being discussed at every level. The October 7th to 9th was League of California Cities Annual Conference. We looked at, I, the most interesting conversation there was looking, I was listening to the discussion of how cities across the nation are grappling with all of these questions. And so I, there's a keynote panel by Leon Andrews on, on that topic with council members from Temecula, Mayor of Carpenterias, Vice Mayor of Stockton, talking a little bit about the differences between individual, institutional, structural, systemic racism, and the different ways in which cities have been working on these issues. News note, we're doing, you know, what, what our plan is, is probably broader and deeper than what I've seen in, in other cities. But what's really interesting to me is how cities are, you know, just across, not only California, but across the country are, are taking this seriously. October 9th was Innovation Tri, Tri Valley Meeting. Again, that was the topic of conversation there, so how businesses are looking at these issues. Completely different subject, October 6th, I attended National Night Out on Zoom. That was not nearly as much fun as going off and seeing neighborhoods and tasting food and meeting people. But, you know, it, it had its, it, it was a good effort. I, and I, I just want to give a shout out to the Police Department for organizing that. And finally, I am the Director on East Bay Community Energy. And I just wanted to mention that people who are signed up for them, there's a Resilient Home, which is a limited time program, is allowing homeowners to see if solar battery backup systems work or value. So you can go to the EBC website to take a look at that and see what, you know, if you have solar panels, I believe you can work to make your home more resilient during times of blackouts and so on. I, that is, what, the one other thing I will mention, just because it's fun, is that we all got to, all of the council members were, got videotaped for the opening of Stockman's Park, which is coming up as soon as that sod sets. And one of my first times really being engaged with the city was speaking on behalf of the city plan in Stockman's Park with my then-six-year-old granddaughter. And as I was being filmed, she got to stand next to me. She's now nine, and time has passed, and we're about to open Stockman's Park. So it's a good thing. And that's all I've got.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. I too attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference last week, this Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's virtually, of course. A number, let's see, one of the things that I always come away with having attended these meetings is the realization that all 400-plus cities in the state of California deal with the same issues that we do here in Livermore. So it's always reassuring to know that other people are dealing with the same issues that we are. Just some highlights, I went to a session on housing in Burlingame. They're looking at housing as a means to deal with the traffic that they get in Burlingame, which is an interesting point of view. A topic on addressing homelessness in a different way in North Orange County. They're creating two navigation centers there in North Orange, North Orange County. I also attended the session mentioned by Councilmember Monroe, led by Leon Andrews. He, he works for the National League of Cities and runs what's called Real Race Equity and Leadership. He, he works for the National League of Cities and runs what's called Real Race Equity and Leadership. And listening to the three people that Councilmember Monroe mentioned, I went to one on, is the virtual workforce the new normal? I think we had some discussion earlier about that in terms of telecommuting, and that was an interesting discussion. SB thirteen eighty-three is a new legislation that takes effect soon. And it's, what it amounts to is a reduction of organics going to the landfill. And this is a mandate with no money associated with it and no relief even because of COVID. Went to a very interesting discussion about changing some streets in three different cities, Paso Robles, Grover Beach and Pismo Beach. Very interesting to hear the, what they dealt with in terms of adding bike lanes, pedestrian crosswalks, slowing down traffic, all the things that we hear about fairly frequently here in Livermore. So it was interesting attending that. And then one of the last things on Friday was the mayor's and council members meeting where we heard people from Calpers talk about the future of Calpers, not only somebody that works for Calpers, but one of the board of director members. So that was interesting. I would like to point out, Councilmember Monroe mentioned it earlier, but we do have a workshop on the fifteenth, starting at six o'clock. It's, it'll be virtual, but it's around homelessness and particularly dealing with mental illness issues with some of our homeless population and some of the resources and the, and the other organizations that are there in the county and the partnership with the county in terms of trying to deal with mental health issues amongst our homeless population. So I invite anybody that can join us, October fifteenth, six o'clock. Thank you.
This is going to be by Zoom?
Yes, Zoom. I'm sure that you can find details on the city website, right, city manager?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Do not have the density of mental health services. Actually, we have no county mental health services on this side of the hill in the Tri Valley. So this is something that's going to require a lot of cooperation. And there's been some conversation about possibly the county and the Tri Valley cities standing up a, a cahoots model, similar to what's being done in Eugene, Oregon. So that's ongoing work and ongoing conversation. So thank you so much, both of you, for your efforts on that. Vice Mayor Warner.
A couple of things, I have spent an inordinate amount of time on the equity and inclusion meetings. We've had not only the larger group, but also each of the subgroups, one night after the other. But we're, we're making good progress there, I think. And more work to be done, and it's not going to happen simply. But within the next meeting or two with each of the subgroups, I think we'll be getting action plans. And remember the beginning of the, when we were setting it up, I, Councilmember Carling and Coomer were very interested in having things happen relatively quickly. And I think we're, we're cognizant of that and we're pushing in that direction. The other thing I wanted to say in general, Councilmember Coomer suggested at the beginning that we include the police officers in the discussion and, and more generally, a variety of viewpoints. We have done that, and I just want to say, I think it's working out pretty well. And I think Councilmember Monroe would, would agree that that's valuable. So then the, also was the National Night Out and the Stockman's Park. One thing under Matters Initiated that was brought to my intention was an effort, and it was also in the Dublin, it was brought up in the Dublin City Council, and they agreed to direct staff to explore the potential for the Tri Valley to have its own health department. I understand that's not a trivial thing, but I would just request that if staff is approached by the other staff in Dublin or Pleasanton, that we agree to cooperate with that exploration. Is that, I get three other head nods on that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I have.
Okay. Okay, well, very good. Well, thank you so much. Again, National Night Out, what a great event that was. Again, much smaller than before. But it was good that we had the stalwarts, most of them were the, the block captains. But certainly thanks to Taylor Burris and Nicole Aguan, who put all that together. Also attended the Innovation Tri Valley Housing Infrastructure and Transportation Committee, where we learned that there is a proposed mandate coming out of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission requiring a sixty percent telecommuting for all employees, for any company that has more than a given number of employees, sixty percent. That could have devastating impacts on companies like BART or Caltrain, AC Transit. So look for that, they just floated that recently, but sixty percent requirement for telecommuting from MTC. Attended the, also the Innovation Tri Valley Meeting. There was a fantastic program by Tony Bayless, who is the director for diversity at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory. Today was the Alameda County Transportation Commission, the multimodal committee. We got an update on the South Bay Connector, it's proposing to connect twenty-one county mega region, which has a GDP of eight hundred seventy-five billion dollars. And they underscored the fact that there isn't a lot of connectivity here. This is mostly dealing with rail transit and creating more connectivity. Planning Projects Committee, we had an update on the Quarry Lakes Parkway. This is a three-point-eight million, a three-point-eight miles connectivity. The cost is two hundred eighty-eight million dollars. It connects the BART Village along the Quarry Lakes Parkway. Has two under crossings, so it's quite a, quite an effort to provide that, that connectivity. And also, there's a, an effort to combine the toll authority, there's three different toll authorities. The VTA, BATA, and, and BFA. So the idea of combining the Alameda County Transportation Commission with the BFA Authority to help streamline costs and efficiencies with the staff. Let's see. A couple of things, there is a survey put out by the League of California Cities that indicated that ninety percent of cities anticipated laying off staff with the post-COVID recession. City of Livermore is not one of them. We've got a solid foundation, thanks to the initiatives from Vice Mayor Warner on ensuring that our, our assets and our reserves are where they need to be. Similarly, New Orleans just announced that they are going to be furloughing forty-seven hundred employees just because of the, the impacts of the COVID recession. A couple of Matters Initiated, there was a great post on Nextdoor where somebody was talking about getting everybody to adopt a, adopt a block to, for, for litter, litter pickup, cleaning up the neighborhood, picking up litter and the like. So it brought to mind that this is really an extension of my GLAD initiative that I started a number of years ago. GLAD standing for graffiti and litter abatement daily. So my matter to be initiated is to re-energize that, maybe to get some greater publicity out there, to bring the community together, to help, help the community along with this community initiative and tying that in with the, the city initiative. So I guess some support on that one. Okay, I got some support. Yes, okay, great. And I, I can talk to the city manager and, and the Ms. Martin about how do we get that moving again? But it was a lot of fun. That's, we got thirty-five graffiti fighters out of that thing. And so let's just get some, some more energy behind this, because if you don't keep pushing, then people, people lose interest. Also, my upcoming State of the City is going to be tomorrow. And we're going to, it's a virtual tour of our John Shirley Council Chamber and the William Mendenhall Emergency Operations Center. Then we walk past the Cooling Tower, that really cool passive cooling system in the building. And there's a large grate on that. And it's, it just cries out for a wine country mural. So have the, the art commission look at that and see what it would take to, to, to get a local artist to put, say, a wine country themed mural there to really speak to, to the community. And because right now it's just a black grate, and I think we could do much better than that. So come back with that one. Okay, I see some nods. Great. Thank you so much.
And so to go clear on that, Honorable Mayor, this would be something that would be placed on the metal grate inside the building that is at the base of the Cooling Tower. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you.
And it could be, you know, a transfer, it could be a, painted directly onto the grate. I'll leave that to, to the artists. But I think it would be, I think it would add a lot to the building. It's right across from our sister city gift cabinet.
So what time is your virtual tour?
That is at six o'clock tomorrow is the, is a Zoom meeting. And so after the tour, then it goes into the State of the City address. And then it's followed by a Q and A town hall.
And everybody knows how to get to it?
Just go to the city website.
Okay.
And with that, before I adjourn, I would like to recognize that we lost a powerful advocate and a great friend from one of our, our partners in the community. And this from the Livermore Joint Unified School District. We, we lost Mike Beyondi, who was a, a great advocate for the students and for the community. And he passed away. So I would like to honor him and adjourn the meeting tonight in his honor and memory. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.